Mike's gonna take care of what?
I don't know.
What signs?
Signs?
Communications.
Oh, I saw something about wheels or something?
What do we need for a quorum to do this?
Wheels on the track, or Mike's gonna go through?
Six of the four.
Yeah.
Non-名义ing committee, five full committee members, vice life, and myself.
The rule, that's, yeah. Okay. Okay.
Besides Mr. D., anybody else for the bus contract?
I think so, and...
So, expect we'll do that pretty quick then, because he's gonna do...
Okay, that's fine.
He's inbound, so I'm waiting for him to do the appointment, three-point round.
That's fine.
Okay. Don, you ready? Kelly?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Good evening, welcome to tonight's school committee meeting. Ethan, would you lead us, please, in the allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Set agenda. We have the minutes, February 12, 2013, February 19, 2013, March 14, 2013, and March 21, 2013. Both pay bills and the payroll.
Make a motion except the consent agendas, right? Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, aye.
Just one thing before we move off the agenda.
Yep.
I think I just noticed the, we posted at the bottom of the page, 7:10 for the next meeting. It's a 7 o'clock meeting, right?
Yeah, yeah. There's no reason for 7:10 next time.
It should be 7 o'clock.
Just so that we get that updated before it's posted.
Okay. What we have on the agenda right now is to look at a reappointment of our towns representatives in the Neshoba Valley Technical High School. Waiting for one of our other selectmen to arrive before we do that. So, what I'm gonna jump into is any interested citizens, and we'll stop there for the moment. So, any interested citizens at this point? Okay. We also have on here the High School Literacy Magazine. Unfortunately, due to illness, our representatives won't be here for that presentation tonight. So, we're gonna skip over that. We want to try and stay as close to 7:45 for the FY14 budget discussion, since we've advertised it that way, and that way folks have an opportunity to come in if they show so desire, we can go over that. What we can do, though, is go over new business, and that's the one in the transportation contract. Steve, wanna take over, please?
Sure. Okay, let me bring it up on screen.
And with us tonight is Mr. George D. of DBUS, who drives, or drives wrongly, owns the company where all our children ride on the buses back and forth to school. Mr. D., welcome.
Okay. So, on March 5th, a couple of weeks ago, we had held a bid opening for regular bus transportation. This is for the regular school buses for regular students. Unfortunately, we had one bidder. We had nine companies originally take, interested in submitting bids and took the package. We had one, one company submit a bid, and one company showed up that chose not to submit a bid. Upon research, and you have the information in the packet, there are some comps from other area towns of recent contracts that are sold that have closed. I feel like, I feel that their contract, that DBUS, is presented as a fair contract. It's a fair price. I'm recommending that school committee vote to accept that contract. And the information, again, is in front of you, so it's an annual contract not to exceed This is a five-year contract. So, this represents a 16% increase over the contract, but that was over the contract base price from five years ago. So, if you average that out over five years, it's roughly 3% a year for inflation, and I feel that that puts us right in line, and it's a fair contract.
Does anybody want to ask Steve questions about this?
You mentioned nine companies polled bids, but we only received one full response.
Correct.
Did there was any reason from any of the companies?
Well, I had heard back, yes, I'm sorry. I had heard back from a couple of companies that they chose not to submit a bid because we were, quote, "a small contract." So, they chose not to bid, so. That's really the only excuses I've heard.
What have we had in the past in terms of, we put this out before?
Last, five years ago, we had three companies submit bids.
Do you remember the previous one before that? Do you remember what that was? Could that have been?
I don't remember the one from previous year. I don't remember. But, so DBUS has had the contract for the last five years. Before that, it was First Student. On March 5th, both DBUS was present and First Student was present. First Student is the company that chose not to submit a bid stating that we were too small of a contract for them to bid on.
Kelly, anything to add?
Well, just that I've taken some time to look at the bid, and I feel it is in line with today's market.
All right. So, those endorsements. I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve DBUS, award the contract to DBUS for the term stated by state.
Seconded. All right. Motion made and seconded to accept a contract with DBUS-ing. Any comments? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, both. Ms. D., what I'd like to add, certainly you run a very good company. Your major employee that you have here runs the whole show for you, Helen Hamm, does a wonderful job, and we're very pleased.
Thank you. She does do a great job.
And we thank you for keeping safe buses.
She takes a lot off our hands.
Safety of the children, as you know. You take that responsibly well.
We do.
And we appreciate that.
Thank you.
So, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And you'll take care of all the signature stuff.
Yes, thank you. George, thank you.
See you later.
All right. We can go back to somewhat the beginning now. And what we're gonna do is we're going to look at the reappointment of our Neshoba Valley Technical High School representative.
Alternate representative.
Alternate, thank you. We're fortunate enough this evening to have Tuva Selectman, Joe Knox, Alex Purdy, and our town moderator, Tim Goddard, who's gonna take the meeting at this point and run us through this reappointment process.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the school committee, members of board of selectmen. The nominating committee consists of the five members of the school committee, the five members of board of selectmen, and the town moderator. So, a quorum would be six of those 11 members, and we do have a quorum present with the full school committee and two selectmen and myself. So, why don't we get right down to business? We're appointing an alternate to the Neshoba Valley Technical High School District School Committee. For the past several years, Mr. Carl Melberg has served the town capably in that capacity. It's my understanding that he is the only candidate at this point, candidate for reappointment. I know that the school committee did, in fact, post the position to see if there was interest from other, other parties. And it's my understanding that there was no other interest expressed. So, we have before us an interested individual, Mr. Melberg, who is interested in being reappointed for a three-year term as the town's alternate to the Neshoba Tech School Committee. So, unless anyone has any questions or any, any comments to make, I'll entertain a motion to make that appointment.
Motion to approve Mr. Melberg as our alternate.
Is there a second?
Start the meeting.
Right. Any other nominations? If not, nominations are closed. All those in favor of reappointing Mr. Melberg as the alternate to the district school committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? None. I declared a unanimous vote, seven votes in favor, none opposed. Mr. Melberg is our choice for reappointment. I would ask superintendent if you could communicate that to Superintendent Klimkowitz at your earliest convenience. I'd appreciate that. That concludes our business here tonight. Mr. Chairman, if only town meeting one of the schools.
I was gonna say, you wanna take an opportunity to plug it?
Well, it's, it fast approaches. I know that there's, there's a lot of interest in town meeting. We certainly hope to see many of these same faces there. I'm forgetting the date now, because I've got, I've got a town meeting in Carlisle before that, on the 29th.
May 6th.
May 6th, and the election is Saturday 11th, I believe. So, I know that we actually have a committee that's designed to increase voter participation. They've been doing a heck of a job for the past couple of years, getting information out earlier, and there'll be a mailing going out in advance of town meeting with pertinent background information on the articles on the warrant, and that, that information gets better and better every time we send it out, and hopefully that'll generate some interest in town meetings.
Thanks very much, Chairman.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Oh, please don't leave. I'll offer you the microphone for a minute or two if you so desire.
Let's have a supper.
Thanks, gentlemen. Have a great evening. If you're all okay with it, what I'd like to do is have Gerald start running us through some of the policies, and that way we'll keep ourselves, we're not towards that 7.45 block of the first discussion. You okay with everyone?
We have to crack the candy at eight.
And he's gonna crack Twizzlers for us, so we'll be on a candy high, sugar high.
We will not look at one of the policies until later in the evening, and it's ADF,
and it's the wellness policy, and that is because we've asked some of the wellness committee folks to come as we go through that for any kind of discussion we may need with that. So, ADF will not be, so take it easy with the rest of them.
Okay. So, I have a batch tonight for first readings here. So, policy GBEBEC, gifts to staff, gifts and solicitations by staff. This has been updated to reflect the current state ethics guidelines and the recent policy update concerning gifts, in particular classroom gifts. They are, it clarifies a little bit more in terms of distinguishing between a personal gift and a classroom gift here. So, this policy brings us up current with the ethics guidelines here, and it's based primarily on the MASC model, policy. Policy JJIB, interscholastic activities athletics here. Tonight, I'm not presenting this with any changes here. I know last year we had talked about this, and in conjunction with the, there was a very similar policy that we rescinded because it was providing conflicting guidance relative to interscholastic athletics. This one here is our, is actually still our, is the same as our current policy, and during our discussions earlier there, we went through the various surrounding towns, in particular the mid-watch communities, so sports policies, and our policy is actually fairly consistent with all of those there. And I wanted to make sure I brought this to Mike's attention, which I know you had provided, you had some questions on this policy last year.
Right.
On it there. So, before, I guess I don't wanna just buzz through this and make sure that if you have some concerns still, that we can try to address those.
What's one we rescinded last year? It's not IHAEB, right? Or was it?
Yes.
It was. So, that one's gone.
Yeah.
That was definitely one, because, right, that was definitely one.
That policy was not really correct.
Right.
On it, and it actually conflicted with the MIAA recommendations on how to conduct your sports program.
Right. And at the moment, I think that, that's more or less what I was concerned about was, and I don't have any other driving issues, so. What's other people's?
The next policy, JLC, student health services and requirements. This is actually a new policy for Littleton. It reflects the current MASC recommendations, and, and what it will be doing is rescinding policy JS and JSB, which are two Littleton-based policies that cover basically the same information, except this one here is worded a little bit more technically correct and is more current with the regulatory requirements here. And then the next policy is policy JLCD, administering medicines to students. This one here, we have a very similarly worded policy JSB, which we're recommending to rescind, which, again, is not really reflective of the Department of Public Health's guidance on administering medicine. This one here is consistent with that policy, with those regulations, and it also reflects the proper language to allow the, for us to apply for the appropriate procedures to allow delegation of administration of medicines for things like field trips and other pieces there. And I believe the administration is updating all of those medical policies, procedures there and ensuring that they're all current. I don't remember the email from you, right, Kelly?
Correct.
There. So, that will bring us more in line with, you know, the, the current sets of recommendations there. The next policy is policy JP, which is student gifts and solicitations. There's no change in, in this. We're just indicating this policy is reviewed. It, it does reflect the current MASC recommendations and is consistent with the, any state ethics issues there. The next block of them will be ones that we'll be recommending to rescind, so this will be the first reading for the rescinding. Policy JLCG, restraint of students in Littleton Public Schools, and then the corresponding procedure JLCG-P, which is the procedure. These are not current, and there's a lot more regulation that actually specifies what needs to occur during these pieces here, and we're providing no guidance beyond follow the regulatory requirements on it. So, we felt that it was, this policy was no longer necessary here. If we were going to add any additional procedures or, or policies, we would adopt this policy and put those specific changes in that we would desire. But since we're gonna be following, basically, the regulated required procedures, we felt it was not necessary to have this policy. The next three, JS, JSA, and JSB, are the ones that we're recommending to rescind, and they're gonna be replaced by the corresponding two previous policies there. So, what I would like to do at this point would be is to take a motion to accept the first reading of, of, of these policies for tonight.
Hold on one second.
Sure.
Gerald, if it's okay with you?
Yep.
What I'd like to do is just go through the list one at a time.
Okay.
See if anybody has a comment before we take the motion. Is it okay with you?
Yep.
Okay. So, first reading, what we're offering this evening is policy GBEBC, gifts to and solicitations by staff. Does anybody have any comments there? And certainly, folks in the audience, you're welcome to offer comments on these policies. JJIB, interscholastic athletics, athletics, excuse me. Student health services and requirements, which is JLC. JLCD, administering medicines to students. JP, student gifts and solicitations. And you wanna take that as the first reading, and then we'll go to the rescinds, rescissions? Okay. All right. So, absent ADF. Go ahead.
Make a motion that we accept as first reading policies GBEBC, JJIB, JLC, JLCD, and JP, as well.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed. Okay, unanimous. All right, Gerald.
Do you wanna motion for the decisions?
Okay, you ready? So, we'll go down that list, you ready to go down the rescission list?
Yep. You want me to go? I can go first if you want.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Okay. Any comments on policy JLCG and its corresponding procedure JLCG-P? Policy JS, student healthcare policy? Policy JSA, immunization policy? And policy JSB, medication administration policy? Hearing no further discussion. We have a motion.
Motion to rescind aforementioned policies.
Seconded. Motion made and seconded. You have the first reading for rescission. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed. unanimous. All right, Gerald.
Do you wanna motion for the decisions?
Okay, you ready? So, we'll go down that list, you ready to go down the rescission list?
Yep. You want me to go? I can go first if you want.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Okay. Any comments on policy JLCG and its corresponding procedure JLCG-P? Policy JS, student healthcare policy? Policy JSA, immunization policy? And policy JSB, medication administration policy? Hearing no further discussion. We have a motion.
Motion to rescind aforementioned policies.
Seconded. Motion made and seconded. You have the first reading for rescission. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed. unanimous. Okay.
I have a few other policy items I'd like to cover tonight. So, policy KHB, advertising. Last year, we held a series of informational investigations and two public hearings on use of advertising in the schools, and the decision was made at that time that we were not gonna move forward with a recommendation in that area. Over the last several weeks, it's come up on, and I guess we're trying to figure out the difference between advertising and recognition plaques here, and I guess the, we wanted to kinda get a sense from the committee of which direction you'd like us to take in terms of updating the advertising policy to be a little bit more explicit or clear, either being clear about the distinction between the two, calling the two the same. You know, we, we need a little direction on, on that and get, before we try to update that. I think the other item that sort of, we probably wanna just sort of clean it up during this process here is, we also have, I call them ads, but that may not be the correct technical term for them. You know, things like in the graduation pamphlet, there's recognition from various town companies and individuals for either donations to the, for scholarships and other things. Technically, that's in the gray area within our policy. Is that a recognition, or is that an advertisement? I think we've been just considering it just a recognition of a donation to the schools there, but again, I think just in terms of clarifying the pieces here, I think we might wanna address that at this time.
Yeah, as I recall when we went through this, you seemed to come down fairly firm in advertising policy. Now, a couple of recent examples that causes us to at least reconsider that recognition piece. We had the LTO speaking about the bricks that they wanna do outside of the track area, and whether or not we should allow or encourage even commercial enterprises from being able to purchase the brick and be advertised, recognized, the words that we're gonna choose here. Similarly, recently Rotary financed the new ticket booth by the football field. Would that be an organization, Rotary-type organizations, Lions, et cetera, that we would have recognition of? And the baseball, yes. So, let's use that kind of as just like an opening salvo. Anybody wanna make any comments, thoughts?
I mean, personally, I don't have a problem with recognizing anybody that contributes to the system, to the, to the district, you know, as long as it's done in a manner that readily, it's readily understood that it's an acknowledgement and not a advertisement or a recommendation. I think the name of a business, you know, it, 'cause I, what I was thinking about in terms of the advertising policy at all, if we were even gonna have one that did allow something that was more explicit, was still not marketing products and services as much as building goodwill, that type of thing. And I fully believe that, you know, anybody that offers something of value to the district should be recognized, and part of the reason that they do do it is to build goodwill. I mean, we shouldn't be fooling ourselves. That's one of the reasons that they do it, and I think we, we shouldn't be discouraging that type of behavior. I think as long as we do it in a reasonable manner, I don't have a problem with it. You know, I mean, we know Donalins is in the district. We know that there are, you know, the Littleton Electric Light and Water, you know, which is quasi-governmental, but still, we know they're out there, they, everybody knows it. We're not fooling anybody if we don't acknowledge it. I don't think we're doing anything wrong by continuing to do it.
And in fact, we might be doing them a disservice if we don't recognize them.
So, I see the difference in term between, and I don't really wanna call all of it advertising, you know, something that says, you know, "from your friends at Donalins" is different than "buy your groceries at Donalins." One is clearly an advertisement for services, and the other is, is, you know, a recognition of a gift from a, from a, as a donation there, and I'm comfortable with the ones, you know, that are just recognizing the, the donation slash gift there versus advertisement for a service or, or a specific set of products there, likewise, from your friends at the Rotary Club or, you know. I'm not having a problem with that, and I see those as distinctly different classes of, of material being sent out. I think the challenge will be is making sure that we, if we have to develop a specific set of guidelines as to what constitutes, you know, you know, the recognition. Is it a permanent thing such as like, would be like with the, you know, with the Brick Walkway type of thing versus, you know, something more transient, like, you know, a flyer that we get sponsored through a donation?
I guess I'm, I don't see one of the facts, but I, I agree with what you guys, as far as the recognition part of it, I think that's common sense. As far as if Coke or Pepsi came in and said that they wanted to, probably end up being Dasani or Aqua Fina, if they came in and said they wanted to put up a scoreboard as long as they could have their brand on it, just like they've done with VeriFine, did a scoreboard down at Shakey Lane years ago, I, I don't see, I don't have a problem with that. If we're able to get a good or a service and we can put some sort of advertisement on that for the, for the business, I see one hand washing the other. It's, it is goodwill, it's recognizing them, and I don't, our kids are constantly advertised to, no matter where they go, whether it's on their phones, there's, there's constantly stuff popping up in front of them. It's just noise. So, I don't wanna see a whole bunch of advertising going down the halls of the schools, not necessarily in favor of what you've researched at Westford Academy, when they built their new facility over there with the, the signs along the outside of the, the track and the football stadium, because when you look at the bang for the buck, I don't think you get enough bang for your buck for the noise that we're putting in front of the kids. So, I guess for me, it's almost a case by case. The scoreboard example, those, those donations are available. It's usually the soda companies, or the water companies now, that put them out there. So, I, I think that if we needed something like that, which we could certainly make an argument maybe at the middle school that we need one on the opposite wall or for, for basketball games. Need is a strong word, don't necessarily need one, but if we had somebody come in and offered to put one up for us, I think we, we should look pretty, pretty long and hard at it to decide whether or not it's in it for us, is with the bang for the buck. So, I, I don't have a, an answer necessarily, but I do think it's more of a case by case.
Okay. Anybody in the audience?
Yeah.
You know the drill.
Yeah.
Alex Pratt, Bridge Road. I like a s-
and offer to pull one up for us, I think we should look pretty long and hard at it to decide whether or not it's in it for us, is what the bang for the buck. So, I don't have a, an answer necessarily, but I do think it's more of a case-by-case.
Anybody in the audience?
Yeah.
You know the drill.
Alex Pratt, Bridge Road. I like especially what Chuck said about, you know, if we need a scoreboard and we don't have the money, you know, let's accept a scoreboard. With this policy where it says, "teaching aids," maybe if we clarified that, broadened that definition to "teaching aids" and "other resources," that would allow us to have that public-private partnership with those businesses or nonprofits that want to give something to the schools but also want to, you know, be recognized for that. It's not, I don't see it as advertising if, for instance, we need a walkway, you know, through the track, and someone says, "Here, I'll, you know, pay for the walkway." If they're doing that and if they're then, you know, putting their name on it, I see that as okay, but I agree that we want to look at it on a case-by-case basis. So, I'm wondering if there's any way we can make the language for "teaching aids" more broad, so "teaching aids" or "other resources" that we need, which wouldn't include, you know, a poster on the wall or whatever as students are going class to class, but that would allow us to accept these gracious donations from private businesses without, you know, damaging the integrity of, you know, of the public school. I think it might be a good idea to, on those questions of, well, do we want to accept this scoreboard with this brand name on it? Could we actually have it go through a case-by-case basis recommended by the superintendent or the business manager? Maybe a business comes forward and says, "Hey, we hear you need a shed. We're willing to pay for a shed, but we want, you know, we want our brand on it." If the superintendent were to say, you know, come forward and present to you, to the school committee, and say, "Here's the idea," yea or nay, would that be an acceptable, you know, way to handle it?
That's not question to answer. We're only going to be issuing guidance tonight to the policy subcommittee.
Right, right. So, I guess that's one thing that you could look into is, is that a way that you want to pursue in terms of, do you want to frame the policy so that it's more expansive of what "teaching aids" and "resources" means? And would there be some way to be able to handle it on a case-by-case basis through the superintendent or through the school committee or both?
Okay. Thanks. Anybody else?
Going off of what's already been said, I think, you know, there's a point where if we need a new shed or we need a new scoreboard and a company comes to us and says, you know, "We'll be happy to provide one, you know, if we can have our brand on it," you know, that's fine by all means, but there comes a point where if we start kind of allowing this to occur over and over again, then it becomes overexposure. And then, you know, what Chuck was just talking about, you know, bang for the buck, we're really not getting it if everything we have here in our schools is given to us by, you know, by someone else. If everything we have has a brand on it, then it seems a lot less like recognition and a lot more like advertising at that point.
Right, good. I think this is kind of a slippery slope here. I think there's a very fine line between advertising and recognition. And the example of the scoreboard, you know, we thought, people may think that advertising or recognition of a soda company may be good, but what of a liquor company? You know, or if they come to us with the same proposal, you know, you start going down a slippery slope here.
I mean, I guess that's where they, that we, maybe the administration has the power to have educationally appropriate conversations about that. I mean, I would assume logical people involved in that conversation who veto something like that. I mean, and to the point of advertising, I mean, just walk through a school, see flat screen, Sony's in it, then you see something else on a microscope. I mean, brands are everywhere. You know, you don't tell us to buy those hanging on a wall, peel the Sony label off. It's real life, so I think if you put the word "donated by" or, you know, graciously donated by your friends at Desan, you know, I think if we clearly communicate to the public, this is a donation and a gift, and if they didn't pay us, that's an over there thing. I mean, the budget's tight, and if you want to talk about community, we talk about this a lot in this room, partnering up with the community. You can't have it both ways. You can't have partnerships and then deny them in a really strange way. I think if we do it tastefully and tactfully, we'd be fine.
Difference being that the microscopes or...
We purchased them.
We purchased them. Again, I mean, I...
I don't need to look at them for flooding children's. I mean, I'm looking through the eyes of my own two children. You know?
Oh, I know. There's brands everywhere, and that's why they're there. Squish on the Nike. Absolutely. There's branding everywhere. And that was my point, really.
Is that?
How much do we have to throw at the kids? I don't want them going down the hallways and seeing that, buying that, building it all the way down.
Quite often, our athletic clothing that we buy have labels displayed, the companies that are producing the athletic wear or something. Something that, there are areas that we really can't deal with unless you start cutting labels off everything, and quite often, they're embroidered in the shirt or the pants. So, there are limitations to what we can do to keep company names out of the school system.
Well, let's see. Darrell's seeking some broad-based guidance, I think. Yes? Okay. How about something along these lines? We know there's a distinction between recognition and advertising. There's certainly a line that gets crossed some way somehow at some point. I think Mark said it well, that certainly there's judgment involved, and we allow, that's the wrong word, our administrators have already exercised considerable judgment with the children. So, some sort of judgment in this area seems appropriate also. Maybe explore some procedures to work with the administration as to how we may stay within the advertising policy. If you think based on this conversation, there are some things that could change in that, tackle that too, please. And I think you can see there's a tendency towards conservancy here. We want to stay somewhat conservative, not dive into the advertising realm by any shape. But, you know, pick a company here in town or whatever, and the bricks, let's use the bricks, well, the LTO, Littleton Track Organization, company gives $500 for, you know, a one-by-one brick, whatever, and say, "Yes, donated by or in memory of," you know, whatever the heck it may be. That would seem to fall within the rubrics we're discussing here. So, maybe if you fashion something that has that in mind. Is that what guys? Anything else on policy?
Yes.
That's why I bought a jumbo bag. Make sure they get them on that side over there before wellness shows up, because I'm not sure.
Chuckles there. Even the name says mom.
Okay. The next one I wanted to bring up is policy JIH, interrogations and searches. In talking with the superintendent, he wanted, we talked about the use of, I call it police assistance in conducting searches. Right now, our policy is explicit that it says superintendent and staff conduct searches. Superintendent brought up sensitivity on this issue regarding use of drug-sniffing dogs or other types of police support aids in doing, you know, in conducting a search. And our policy was kind of silent on it, and I think based on his experience, he was seeking some, a little bit more explicit guidance from the board, the committee in that area. I looked at our policy and discussed with the superintendent, and I'm leaning towards adding the phrase, "The superintendent is authorized to request police assistance in conducting searches in a safe and efficient manner," to just basically set the boundaries that he is allowed to use law enforcement personnel in doing it. It's very explicit also that it doesn't authorize private security firms for conducting searches or anything like that. And then the other thing, I think, maybe in terms of just, again, I call it a sense of the committee on the use of police dogs for conducting drug searches, is that something this committee is comfortable or uncomfortable with? So, again, just being able to provide some, a little bit more specific guidance to the superintendent in implementing this policy. So, it'll be a two-part piece here. I'm going to bring forward a one-sentence change to the policy there, and then just sort of like to just get a sense of the committee about the use of drug-sniffing dogs in conducting drug searches.
The first that I have on that is, if you look at the wording in the policy as it's written right now, searches are supposed to be pretty specific. They're not general, "We have an idea, let's go find out if we're right or wrong." It's more specific about, and I'm basing this on what I'm reading, but you can correct me if I'm wrong, that you would only be acting on information that you already had that would indicate we need to do a search. We wouldn't just do a search because we haven't done one lately.
Correct.
You know, and my concern about a canine-type operation is, to me, that starts to bleed into, "We haven't done a search yet, let's do one." If we know that there's a reason and we're going to go look in the locker, the specific locker that we have reason to believe in, and if it's in there, they're going to find, they're probably going to find it. Why, what couldn't they find that the dog would find instead, unless they didn't know where to look in the first place and the dog was going to help narrow the search? But that doesn't sound like what this policy is supposed to cover.
And I think that's the type of clarification that the superintendent's requesting us to provide a little bit more guidance in that area.
I mean, you know, my point is, I think, is that if we're going to talk about having dogs in the school, then we should, this policy needs to be more broad anyway, because this is pretty specific. I mean, it says, "We'll be conducting a way..."
Trying to find out the language.
Third paragraph.
The third one.
Probably the bottom of the fourth one, "In all cases, the nature of the search must be..."
Right, "reasonably related to the object sought and not excessively intrusive in light of the age and gender of the child."
So, I think we had conversations about drug-sniffing dogs at safety and security 1.2, and we had two conversations. One, it does fall under the policy if you have reasonable expectation, but two, we also talked about it from an educational standpoint about how some schools have used them as a partnership with the local police department to just let the community and the kids know that this is something that's out there, and this is...
See, but that's the concern I have, because this policy is not designed to have the kids believe that they're going to get searched at any point during the day just because...
No, I don't think that's... That's what I'm saying. What I'm saying is this policy, even if you tweak, this policy covers the possibility of the superintendent and administration deciding that there's grounds for a drug-sniffing dog, because that falls under the definition of a search. Maybe I can add a...
See, no, I don't agree with that.
And secondarily, the second one is, for educational purposes, if you wanted to, you know, do a demo of this, we've talked about...
Play something.
Doing that through the health...
Show how the dog can step out.
But that's not a search, that's an education.
That's what I'm saying. I think there's two different things in the play here that we've had conversations before.
See, I'm thinking about, like you just said, Mark, that, you know, if we have reason to believe that there's drugs in the locker, we should go get the dog to find out. If you have reason to believe there's drugs in the locker, go look for them, you'll find them. What will the dog find that you can't find if you know what's in the locker?
Depends how creative you think the program trend might be.
Just a point of clarification, so that you understand what the intent is. The intent is to search premises, lockers, cars, not individuals. So, it is not as if dogs would be brought into classrooms with children in the classrooms. We're talking about a middle school, high school use of canine assistance if necessary. I mean, it's no secret to anybody here, anybody in the community, that Littleton is not exempt from having illegal drugs come through town, prescription drugs that are illegally used. If you talk to our local police department, they will most definitely tell you that there's an increase in that kind of activity in town. Our job is to make sure that our schools are safe, and the only way you can do that is by using appropriate assistance. I would like to think that our administrators have enough time and are in the halls enough to take a look at suspicious situations, but you and I both know that's not the case. You would have to be monitoring cameras all day long. So, this gives an opportunity to do two things. It sends a serious message to our community and to our students that we want to keep our schools safe and drug-free. The second message that is communicated is that, if necessary, we will bring in assistance to ensure that this is in fact the case. As a superintendent, I can stand up publicly and say, "I feel our schools are safe and drug-free, but I'm doing that on a judgment basis, not a fact basis." We cannot guarantee that our schools are drug-free unless, at times, and when there's good reason to do so, we bring a trained dog in, for example, to ensure that's the case.
For a specific instance?
For a specific...
It is reasonable.
Right, if there is a reasonable amount of information that the police have or the school-based administration has.
And Mike, if you play that out, that question you asked me, and I don't, and I have reasonable expectation, and you have a savvy person, and I come up empty in that one particular locker, it doesn't mean it hasn't moved, it doesn't mean somebody's got one over me.
But that's, so that's my point.
But then that gives us that ability to call upon our law enforcement partnership and say, "I'm out of my element here, and I got enough advertising, and they're going to help us make that judgment call." That's what they...
If you're telling me that you have a requirement to secure the schools better than we have been doing in the past because of evolving situations, that's a different discussion. This discussion is specific to this policy and it has wording in it that related to the object sought in excessively, not excessively intrusive in light of the age and gender of the child. I have, I don't have a problem having the discussion about whether or not we need drug-sniffing dogs going through the high school and or the middle school. Hopefully, that's the end of it, okay? But, to me, that's a separate discussion relative to this particular policy. It seems like this policy is written to protect a particular student that somebody in administration might have a suspicion is doing something that is outside the boundaries of behavior in the schools, but at the same time, we want the children to feel like they're in a safe, secure environment, that they don't have to feel like they're being watched and second-guessed every move they make, and that's why I think the policy was written in this particular manner, and I support that. And I just worry about us trying to do things beyond this particular policy. If we have reasons to do other things in the buildings because we feel like we need them, let's have that discussion. But right now, we're talking about this particular policy, which is partly designed to protect a particular student in a, you know, fairly vulnerable environment. They're on their own, their parents aren't there, and there's wording in here to try to get the parents as involved as possible. So, that's the reason I hesitate. It's just relative to this particular policy, not the general use of securing the buildings with whatever means we feel are necessary at any point in time.
It's a good point, Mike, that you bring up. A policy perhaps needs to be broader. And just a point of clarification, canines are not specifically used for drug searches. They're used to detect bombs and also weapons. So, I think there's a broad range of talents that a dog...
Right, and to me, that use is beyond the scope of this policy, and I certainly wouldn't be arguing that we shouldn't be doing, using that type of resource. I just don't necessarily feel it should be locked into this particular policy because this seems a little different than what we're talking, some of the aspects of what we're talking about right now.
Can you remember the last time we had a dog in the buildings?
Just asking.
Just asking. I can't remember. Not on your tenure, right? If it's okay with you, always other than this one. It won't matter until it matters, and that is, the first day we have dogs in there, and people may say, "Why did you do that?" I know it would be for a good reason. But what I'd like is the public to be aware we're having this discussion, and not just that it's, and I know it's in the agenda, it's posted and everything, but it's not for ourselves. We know folks don't look at these every single time.
And the intent wasn't to finalize this tonight. This was to make sure, we need a direction on how we're going to...
That's the thing, and that's where it's very valuable, because you did get the discussion going on. I would like it turned into a public hearing in the near future. You publicize it widely, that, you know, the possible consequences that are associated with the adoption of the policy that at least has contemplated this evening, what might be some of the fallouts. Certainly, we'd want some police input. It'd be good to have our police there that evening to speak from their perspective. I'll let you think about this a little bit, whether or not we should have our lawyer present to answer any legal questions that may come up, because we could just speculate endlessly when it comes to the legal aspects of it. Somebody may well have a very good question that's answered in law and not something we could answer. So, that's what I'd recommend if you're all okay with that, and work with the superintendent to get that on the agenda in the near future.
All right. Just one item, mainly just like...
Just one more thing, sir.
Just one more. He didn't need a police dog, he always solved the case.
Just relative to searches, this is the only policy that authorizes search within the schools. That's why it's brought in under this one here. We don't have a separate, there's no separate policy for other types of searches. So, this is setting both the protections for the student and the authorization to conduct searches. So, there's two pieces incorporated into it, and if you feel we need to clarify that a little bit, I could also take a look at that as we work this.
But this is current, if I may see right now?
But this is current, if you may see right now?
Yeah, we were comfortable that night, and, you know, it's only, what, two months ago, back in January, and Kelly raises a good point, it seems that we're missing that element, so now it's on our scope. All right, anything else on policies? Motion or anything?
No, those were just, I wanted to just get some guidance here as we do that, and then we're planning in May to bring section F, section H, and section L, which is facilities negotiations and education agency relationships, and that will be our objectives for this school year, for policies, to finish up that next batch there, so.
All right, Mark, are you ready? Okay, we're gonna do some old business and not necessarily dive back into the budget discussions, but certainly have some here on the FY14 around budget and questions that folks may have. Now, one that did materialize, and we wanna try and give as best an explanation as we possibly can, was in the middle school, dealing with student load and the student-teacher ratio. We've asked Dr. Branco, principal of the middle school, just to give us a little background, and what we hope to achieve with this is to show that there was a rational discussion on this, many parties were involved, it wasn't an arbitrary decision, and not only that, but as far as how they went about being able to work with the children, you're gonna find that some of it's not unique to this year, that these are techniques, procedures that have been used in the past, and when the number, a large number just gets thrown out as a ratio without some of the background information, it's less than good for us because it leads us down perhaps the wrong rabbit holes. So, I'm gonna ask you there, Principal Branco, to get us out of a rabbit hole.
Yes. So, what I've put together, which is also in the packet, is a class-size overview report. And so, I'm gonna kinda talk everybody through the document quickly, but I'll then, I'll kinda go off the document and just give you some more pertinent information. Yes?
It wasn't in the packet, it's not online?
No, it's not, it was, it was actually just...
Sorry?
It was just submitted to us yesterday.
I pulled it up in a different document, I'm sorry.
What, you're making it available?
We'll make it available as soon as we're done tonight.
So, I'll go through the document quickly and then I'll go back to the top, so if you don't mind just scrolling up as I do that, Steve. So, I gave you a little bit of an overview of historical deployment and pedagogy strategies that are directly related to class size, then the next section has a historical overview taking us all the way to the current senior class. After that, there's a section on the future average class size projections in Littleton based on our current enrollment. I did some local comparisons, and then the two bullets under that talk you through the process that we came, that we used to come to our decision. Okay? So, I'll kinda jump around a little bit, but starting with the historical overview, I just wanted people to get a feel, this was good history for me to go through, since I only have two and a half years in the district, as far as my knowledge base went. So, to take a look at where we have been in Littleton with students entering sixth grade, we've been anywhere between 21 and 28, as far as our class size with ratios, and you notice that that class of 2015, I think I knew, knew classes, I apologize, 2015 was at the, at the high of 28 to one at the time, with a low with the class of 2013, when they only had 104 students enrolled that current year. We took a hard look at our future average class size projections, so if you look at our current fifth grade, which is the class we're, we're talking about, class of 2020, after that, we have 26 to one projected, 20 to one projected, 24 to one projected, and 26. So, after this particular class of 2020, we'll be back in, in line with, with our historical numbers where we have been. Lot of questions about how other towns around us fare in this. I did answer those questions, I looked at four school districts within the surrounding area, and I made sure I looked at comparable models. So, for example, Acton Boxborough is not on this list because their sixth grade is in an elementary school model, spread over five or six elementary schools, so I didn't wanna compare apples to oranges, I wanted to make sure we stayed consistent. If you do, excuse me, do notice that there are some schools around the 25 mark, but most of them are somewhere between 22 and 23, and when we got either assistants or principals on the phone, depending who we were talking to when we did this research, it's important to note how many home rooms, number one, so they have eight and 10 home rooms in many of those schools, where we're dividing our number by five, and secondarily, at least in two of the communities that I can speak, speak educatedly about, Westford and Chelmsford, they start to level their math programs three times over, where we only level our math twice, with two, two math split in seventh grade and two math split in eighth. And so, what happens is the reality of class sizes, they start the school day with this number, similar to how ours is in seventh grade, but the minute you level classes, even if it's only in one subject area, the unintended consequence is class size on the other side. So, if you have 62 kids split over two sections of 31, you could have the rest of the kids in smaller class size, and then when the other kids go to the other core subject areas, the class sizes fluctuate. So, only, at our middle school particularly, only sixth grade travels in this total number. Once they hit seventh grade at our school, and then all the way to 12th grade, your class size is totally dependent upon enrollment, course selections, and electives at that point. So, I, Westford and Chelmsford made that pretty clear, that while even these numbers look nice and low, that that's how students start the day, but once they get splintered into math cohorts, there is the possibility of having 27 and 28, and in one particular case, there were 29 to 30 in math classes, based on that enrollment, because you're not gonna deny children for the, you know, for getting into an upper level math class, if that's actually their capability. So, but I know that there are a lot of questions, a lot of people have asked how we're comparing, so I just wanted to make sure that that was out there. So, going back to the top of this document, a little bit of information that I think is important for people to know, if you're not observing classrooms, if you haven't had children come through before, that's not necessarily unique to us in Littleton, but I want, I would like it to be out there, that our staffing in our core academic classes is extremely fluid, so at any point in time, you could walk into some classrooms and see one adult, at other times in the day, you can see two, three, and sometimes even four adults, based on the population of our students. While some of those adults in the room are specifically designated for one or two children in a classroom, oftentimes, they're in there for cohorts of children between four, six, seven, and eight, and our practice, which we are very, very proud of, and we work hard to maintain this, is to make sure that especially with young adolescents, as they get older, they start to not feel like they have a shadow right next to them, so we empower our teacher assistants to be responsible for their specific students, but in many cases, they function as classroom assistants overall, and that is actually consistent all the way through all three grades. So, again, while we have current numbers of 25, 26, and 27 to one, in many, many cases, we have two, three, four adults in classrooms at a time, who are, who are managing small group instruction, who are doing rotating class within class models, there's also a lot of, there's a lot of small group instruction that happens where one teacher's working with one group and another assistant is working with another. So, that's obviously going to continue at the middle school. If you look at the autumn two bullets, I wanted people to see the process, Steve, if you don't mind slitting it up, that we had gone through. We started these conversations back in October as a leadership team at the middle school, we sat down once we really had a good handle on the enrollment after October 1st, sat down with the leadership team at the middle school, and our drivers, if you look at the bullets, our drivers in those conversations were, I know we did this prematurely, but we were assuming, or hoping for a level staffing budget, and figured that that might potentially be the best that we were gonna do, and that's what we were hoping for. Preservation of the team model, which is really, really crucial to middle school success, and we did not wanna have to blow that out, we feel like we're very good at that, we feel like the school is functioning at a high level, and we didn't wanna start cross-grading teachers and turn it into a junior high model, when we were very happy with the current system that we had in place. We did brainstorm two or three other team configurations that we could use to potentially reduce class size, the reality of all three of those brainstorms was that they all required increases in FTEs. So, at this point in time, and at that point in time, we weren't in a position where we were anticipating an increase of FTEs, so that bullet and that driver kinda took that conversation off the table. So, finally, we said, "How else can we handle this?", and we had a long discussion about providing each core subject with a teacher assistant, which would result in a 15 to one student to adult ratio in the classrooms. So, we can do that under the level staffing requirements of this current budget, and our plan is to take current FTE positions and to very carefully decide which employees are going to do this work, and make sure it's the right match for our students, the right match for the teachers that they'll be working with, and there will be a teacher assistant in all four core academic subjects in sixth grade. We'll do a program assessment, that's what the last bullet says, throughout the school year, we'll do end-of-year evaluations also, we'll sit down with the sixth grade team, we'll sit down with the leadership team, we'll talk about whether or not it worked the way we think it's going to work, and if the suggestion of the sixth grade team and the leadership team is that, yes, it in fact was beneficial and helped us meet the needs of these kids, and allowed us to have a 15 to one ratio that was very productive, we'll follow through with the recommendation to do it again in seventh grade, and the same group of children will have teacher assistants in all four classes that year, and then they'll do it again in eighth grade. So, we're committed to putting a teacher assistant in all four academics for this, the longevity of these students' time at the middle school. If for some reason, the recommendation of the sixth grade or the leadership team is that that was not as beneficial as we thought it would, then we have hard conversations to have in here too. But at this point in time, we had multiple meetings around this as a leadership team, just as recently as two weeks ago, after I was here for the first meeting, to make sure, and they went back to the sixth grade team, and I visited with the sixth grade team to say, "This is, this is the plan that's on the table, I need to know if you feel like we're doing right by these students." And everybody at the sixth grade team and the leadership team level has backed this plan and really feels like they have been in positions in either other districts, or have had friends in other districts, who have gone through 29 or 30 without this kind of support, and they feel very fortunate that we can put this model in place to support the students' needs. I just can't speak enough to the fluidity of our classrooms, I think, that cannot be lost, that we use all kinds of instructional methodologies, regardless of whether there's 20 or 29, so we use small group instruction quite often, we use self-directed and individual learning experiences, we use class within the class model, we use stations at the middle school, we do readers and writers workshop at the sixth grade level. There are many, many, many instructional models at the middle school, particularly at the sixth grade level, that do not look necessarily like the classroom that some of us grew up in, where it was stand and deliver the entire time. Because of that, I'm confident that these kids are gonna be buzzing around and moving and learning from each other, with each other, with qualified adults in the classroom.
Yes, just a couple of things.
One of the, the challenges when we start looking at class sizes on the basis of the number of home rooms, is that it only takes into account partial staffing. At our middle school, if we look at the number of home rooms we have in grades six, seven, eight, we have 15. In reality, though, we have 28 teaching staff providing services to students. And I wanna reemphasize that point, the, the ratio that you, you see, projected for next year, takes up 15 of the 28 available staff to, to work with students. That's not including educational assistance, it's not including literacy specialists or math specialists and other people that deliver services to children. So, it's, it can be somewhat misleading, and, and the fluidity is a very important point. Most of the time, when I'm in classrooms, it's very, it's a very rare occasion that I don't have at least two adults in the classroom, sometimes three, I see, sometimes four. Our teachers are very good at using various instructional strategies that engage students. Principal Branco had mentioned that things had changed when, when we were in school, or since we were in school, and, and the days of having a teacher stand at the front of the room, and I remember vividly taking a senior biology class in high school, and we had the overhead projectors with the thick rolls, and the class was an 80-minute class, and three-quarters of that class consisted of the teacher unraveling the roll with notes for us, that was a good example of passive instruction. In this day and age, that's not acceptable. We expect our students to be engaged, yes, there are times that our students have, have a, a bit of passive instruction in the form of a lesson, but clearly, if students are, are going to retain knowledge, they need to be actively engaged in exercises, dialoguing, et cetera. As a result, our classrooms are grouped, they're not straight rolls very often, so we have a multiple, a multitude of things happening. As we move forward, this is just, I guess, a, a beginning, my dream would be that we start using multi-paced instruction more. That could be a mask for differentiated instruction, but multi-paced instruction is, is far more intense in terms of moving students along a pace that they're capable of moving. That allows us to meet all the learning needs of students within a heterogeneous grouping, our students that perhaps are struggling, our mid-range students, and our ones that are finding the master of material fairly easy. So, I would venture to gain that as we move forward as a middle school and a high school, we're gonna see greater fluidity in our classes, and the traditional way of grouping classes may in fact relax. What I mean by that is, we have somebody in grade six math, for example, that is mastering that concept, there's no reason why they couldn't walk up the hall and experience a grade eight math class for a unit or two. So, these are, these are activities or, or strategies that we're, we're currently working on as we vision toward the future.
Yeah, we're actually doing that now, we have multiple students who are cross-graded in subject areas, we have seventh graders taking eighth grade math classes, we have an eighth grader taking high school course online. So, you know, the, the last piece, not to hammer the fluidity piece too often, but it's important to know that there are students who come in and out of those classrooms too, for a variety of reasons. So, if they start with 29, it might be that two out of four of those core academics, the class number could be as low as 23 to 24 sometimes, because not all students have the same needs, so in order to meet needs, we have some students coming in and some students coming out. So, again, this is a starting number, when the bell rings, it, in, in many cases, is not gonna stay 29 the entire class, the entire school day, and we're very, very, we're very, very, I hate to say satisfied, because it's a weak word, we're very, very happy that, that we had the right staff to be able to put an assistant in every room. I think that that's a big win, and the faculty is actually very happy that that's happening. They were prepared to hear, "You have 29 kids in a room, and that's the best we can do." And it's not the best we can do, it's not the best we can do for our kids, and we can put qualified assistants in the room. And the other conversation we're having is, if we're gonna bring back our co-teaching training, we talked about PD for next year, and one of the things we talked about is taking our teacher assistant staff and involving them in the co-teaching training, so that we can really ramp up the skills of the people who are working in the trenches, side by side with the teachers.
Maybe the superintendent could just help clarify for me a statement he made last week, and, you know, so I think, I understand that at the elementary level, changing class sizes is as simple as putting a new teacher in, you can redistribute, because one teacher teaches the classes there, and then you made a comment about point twos there, could you maybe just expand on that in terms of, really, what is the impact? Do you have to bring in five teachers to really affect the, maybe if you'd just clarify that for me, I'll... I'd be happy to. If, if we, we look at a, a very basic schedule, and we'll assume our students have seven periods a day, and if we were to run another class of, of grade six students, we would have to find teachers for those seven periods. In a middle school environment, our teachers are specialists, so they're specialized in one subject area, they're specialized in math, or science, English, or history. Very rare, in the state of Massachusetts anyway, do we find teachers that are carry in dual certification, and one of the reasons why, DIL certification requires a lot of extra courses, that's not the case in some other states. Some other states may have avenues to DIL certification far easier than we see in Massachusetts, we're exploring this and encouraging it, but it is a major undertaking. You take that accompanied with the fact that in Massachusetts, teachers are required to earn a master's degree, it becomes a little more of a deterrent to find dual, dual-certified staff. But let's say we, we did find dual-certified staff, we were, for some reason, were, were able to pick a needle out of the haystack, so to speak, that would mean that even if we had somebody certified in math and science, which is a common link, we would only need them for point four, point four of a position, and then we would hopefully try to find somebody certified in ELA in social studies, and that would be another point four of a position. So, it, it's not easy to, to simply say, "If we hired a teacher, we could meet the needs of students by adding another class," that's not the case within a middle school setting that requires specialty certification. Does that help out, Darrell?
I wanna just make sure, it's, it's not as simple as, you know, hiring two teachers. Hiring two teachers, you have to hire enough to cover the whole set of courses that they're qualified to teach for, and usually, quite frankly... qualified to teach for, and usually, quite frankly, you have to hire a whole person. So to effectively teach sixth grade, you need five, five, five people there. So we're not talking about being able to selectively add like the one teacher back in to bring the ratio down, you actually have to balance it across the whole set of skills that can actually are certified to teach there. So realistically, you have to, in order to adjust those ratios, you'd have to bring in three to five people to do that. That's what I'm trying to, to really understand there.
Well, I mean, you can look at this two ways, you can look at it, excuse me, from a bare minimum point of view to make the program work, but we all know that it would be very hard to keep a point four teacher, and to add to that, we would have to change their assignment for three years, and then we probably wouldn't need them anymore, because high school is, is organized in a different way. So I guess in order to sustain staff, you, you would have to entice them with more than point four of a contract.
And when I talked about brainstorming other schedule options, you have to keep in mind that this particular school, world language is on team, that's how we already redistributed our students five times over. So it's the four core subjects plus the world language elective. That's not necessarily just unique to Littleton, but that's, in every middle school, the team is defined by different subject matters, it happens to be designed, defined here by your four content and your world language. So you'd be talking about, when we talked about this ebbly, you know, what happened, what are the ramifications of taking world language off-team? How many teachers would you then have to hire to create another hybrid team to then cycle these kids through? So you're actually talking about losing a section, having to then add sections to replace that, and then reschedule world language somewhere else in the school day, which is work that's doable, and it's very large work and hard work, so I don't want to say we can't do it, but we, when we talked about that, we talked about what that would take, it still takes two to three teachers to get that work done, and we don't have those two to three teachers currently. And, and we weren't convinced that that was the right move. Leadership team kept saying, "We're not convinced that to blow everything up," when we're really satisfied and happy with the work that's being done at a high level right now. We didn't want to jeopardize all of that work, we, they're really, really confident that by putting a teacher assistant in every classroom, that they're going to run solid classrooms.
You know, obviously, this is a transition year for this particular group, we've known this group's been out there, my youngest son is in that group. So, you know, I think, I think this is, this is very worthwhile to see the numbers that are up there, to understand that while it is large, it's not fifty percent larger than we're used to dealing with, it's, it's, you know, in order of degrees, there's a magnitude. And this is very worthwhile, because like I said, it is a transition year, and we've been able to deal with this in a particular manner when they were in the elementary level, and now we have, you know, a, a roadmap for how you're going to try to deal with it. Appreciate the fact that, you know, you're, you're going to take a, a way down the road and then reevaluate, and we'll see where we're at. And then as, you know, Mr. Clund, you just mentioned, even when they get to high school, it will change again. It will be a little less of a transition than it is from elementary to middle school, the middle school to high school is similar, much more similar than elementary is to middle school. But, you know, I feel like the process, a process has gone, been gone through, you know, you guys are paying attention, you understand what the ramifications of the situation are, and, you know, we'll go forward and see how we do. I hope for the best, not even the best, I hope that, you know, it's as rewarding experience it has been for the kids who are in smaller classes. You know, I, you look at some of the classes here, it would be interesting to see, I don't necessarily think that the class that has twenty or twenty-one to one versus twenty-six, twenty-eight, or twenty-nine to one, again, you're going to see an order of magnitude performance better. You might see it, you might not even, it depends. I mean, Littleton is so small, one or two kids can skew the curve pretty significantly, you know, or five or six kids, just because it's only a hundred. Each kid is about a percent, sometimes more. So, you know, I, I feel like there's a process that's been followed, and, you know, as a parent, I'm comfortable to see how the year goes, and we'll move forward from there.
Other than this forum, have you reached out to the parents of the incoming sixth grade class?
No, so, yeah, thank you for asking, yeah. So traditionally, I, I think I said this in the last meeting, traditionally, I always wait until the budget is formally approved, because I always think it's premature to start talking about what our plans are, if, just in case something happens. So at this point in time, yeah, I'm going to take time over the April vacation, craft a nice transition letter for all the parents, put this out there. The other thing I'm doing is, starting this week, as long as it goes through Mike McGeekern's office in time, I'm going to invite all of the class of two thousand twenty-two, the weekend update that I send out every Friday, so that parents can start to get the update from me, and start to see the culture of the middle school and see what's happening, and just kind of do a soft introduction there. You know, "Welcome to the middle school, I wanted you to see that this is a form of communication I use regularly, this is what it looks like, this is what's different at the middle school," get them to feel that, and then when we come back from April vacation, the, the formal paper there will go out with transition dates, with the plan. Last year, we held our transition evening for parents very late in June. I think that it would be beneficial based on what's been going on to hold that earlier, and I'm just wrestling with our district master calendar, quite honestly, to find a good time to get that done. So we, we like to do all of that early. The students still won't come up until June, there's a lot going on in May for all of us, so we'll still take a, take a breath and wait until June to bring them up for a move-up date. But I think as far as a parent night goes, we'll probably do that much earlier this year than we did last year.
Great. Do we have questions, Mark?
Jenny, you're going to have to speak up a lot from back there. We talked about the core subjects and the class size, and I know you've mentioned specifically that a lot of, at times, there are kids that come out of those classes, but what about the unified arts classes? Particularly, more kids are in there, is that going to be affected either way?
Right, thank you. So there's, there's two places we're looking at right now, one is our world language elective. Traditionally, our special education population, at least fifty percent of that population every year does not take world language, because that tends to where they sometimes get services. So one of the reasons why we didn't feel the assistant was necessary there is because based on history, we know that that class size is not going to be twenty-nine. Secondarily, due to the fact that teacher assistants don't get contractual prep time, there are employees who work all day long, we will have the luxury to be able to redeploy those staff members during the unified arts. So Mr. Schumaker is our unified arts team leader, we had a meeting last week to talk about that, and he's going to work with his team between now and September to figure out which classes, which subject matter do you think you really need an assistant with. For example, Mr. Gillette, twenty-nine versus thirty versus twenty-five, he felt confident it wasn't going to affect PE. However, in, in a computer lab, or in an art class, or in a wellness class, those teachers might feel like to have that assistant would be a blessing. So we're going to, we're going to let them come back to me with that information, and then I'll schedule the, the people accordingly.
It won't go more than the twenty-nine, because we ask students.
The only time that ever happens is in music electives, because fifty kids in the band is quite honestly appropriate, and that's true in chorus, so in the, in the larger, in the, you know, in the elective classes, yes, but it shouldn't go higher than that anywhere else.
I have several questions, Mr. Branko, and I'll, I'll lay them out, and then you can answer as you will. First was, will the aides stay with their, like, the English aide will stay with the English teacher all day long, or will it travel with that group of children from class to class? And two, is there a job description somewhere online that, or somewhere to be seen that says what the qualifications of the aides are? And last, currently, I have a son in seventh grade, one, one in his upcoming class, and he has told me there's not enough desks in his advisory class for everybody that is in there, so...
There's, I promise, I defer, I don't know where the furniture thing's coming from, there's plenty of furniture, so unless your son and I have to check, this happens to be in a science lab. We have science, if you've been in the school there, you know, we have science tables around the side, and then we have about twenty or twenty-five desks in the middle. So we, yes, we have some kids who sit at the labs, but that is an appropriate desk for a science room. So I, I mean, I have no problem checking in personally to find out what the situation is there, but we have never had a furniture problem. As a matter of fact, we're hiding desks in strange spots, because we're, we have a storage problem, more than a furniture problem. So the first question, though, is a great question, we actually don't have the answer to that yet, the sixth grade and I are going to have that conversation, I think that's a fascinating conversation, and I'm also, I'm going to empower them to help me make that decision. So they're, they're kind of taking both sides of the coin on this one. Some people right now think, wow, that'd be great benefit to having one instructional aide spend all day in ELA, really get great at that curriculum, work as a true co-teaching partner with that person. The counter to that is the benefit of one person traveling with a cohort and really knowing those kids. Wow, I just saw so-and-so in the last class, he was a little off, or yeah, he didn't get that yesterday, now he gets it today. That's actually the model we use for special ed, and we have heard endlessly that that's the benefit from that, that they get to be with that child all day, so when they get services somewhere else, you have a reporter, so to speak, someone who really has experienced that child's day. So we're weighing the two options of experiencing the children's day versus, and in, in some cases, the needs of the kids are going to have to trump the needs of the adult, quite honestly, that's, I, I, that's non-negotiable for me usually. So the needs of the adult are, wow, it'd make much easier for me just to take ELA all day and really get down with that, but that might not be in the best interest of kids, so I'm going to respectfully tell you as soon as we know the answer to that.
And what about the requirements for aides?
I believe it's the Sam Jones description that's on file currently.
It is, and, and I can answer that for you. We've been very fortunate within our district to, to have a situation where, where most of our aides, a good number of our aides are certified teachers, or they have some other university degree or even master's degree. That's not the bare minimum, we have people that have far more qualifications than are required to be an ed assistant. That seems to be more typical during the past six or seven years where the market has changed, so to speak. So I feel, as a superintendent, we're very, very fortunate to have the caliber of educational assistants that we do.
What's the bare minimum?
Bare minimum would be two years of college.
Thank you, Mark.
I have a quick question. So are, are you going to need to hire more aides, or are you just utilizing who's already on staff?
Right, right now, it is, it is a level staffing budget, and we believe we can do that within the constraints of a level staffing budget. However, as is always the case, if, if special ed enrollment changes, or if anything else changes, then we will do what we always have to do.
Currently, with, with the special ed needs, there's no problem?
Currently, it's being done with level staffing.
Any questions on the fiscal year fourteen budget in general? Lisa, you had asked about donations and like, you know, there's various other ways that money may flow into the district. We're putting that together. You might say, well, you know, every check that comes in, certainly Steve does, you know, very pigeonholes all that stuff, I'll be funny on that. We want to make sure we get a reasonably good accounting, and it's not going to be certainly by name of contributor, in some instances, it'll be, you know, categorizations of types, you know, businesses, a family member, and how it may have been earmarked of some sort. So we want to get a good answer for that.
Also, is that going to include things like, look at also field trips, and, you know, that families incur throughout the year?
Well, as an example, let's use the Washington trip. I don't know, I'll be candid with you, I don't know how far down we'll go with every single possible activity that a parent may be paying for, because now it's, it's going to go grade by grade, well, if each child participated in this specific activity. We'll, we'll develop a criteria, if you will, that kind of bounds that question. I think the way you just posed it almost makes it a little too difficult to do. In other words, every single activity, where does that end?
Well, it, it's more, it's more what is expected during, I mean, there are after-school activity fees certainly that we know about, but, you know, just in general, and actually, I wasn't even thinking about DC, that's a big one, but, you know, in general, there's typically a number of field trips across the year, and I'm not saying that they're huge, but I'm saying that, you know, those...
Yeah, remember, a lot of that too, well, certainly, it's revenue in, it's revenue out, and, and most instances, it's a dollar for a dollar. So you're paying for a service, if you will. It's not a case of money pours in, it goes to the general fund, it's distributed elsewhere, it's a very specific purpose. And if the trip is fifty dollars, mom, dad contributes, or whatever, pay fifty dollars, and that activity's taken care of. I don't know that we'll capture every one of those, in all honesty, okay?
Right, no, and, and I mean, I'm, I'm just saying, in general, it would be nice to have, you know, a, a number that is typical, which does seem to increase as they grow.
Because everything with a purpose, it'll want to be, okay, what's our purpose? If we had zero field trips, that'd be zero dollars. If we were able to, you know, be fortunate to have numerous field trips over the course of a year, it's a bigger number. So what's the right figure there, zero or a big number of dollars?
I, I think my, my, my question actually was meant to, and so what I'm hearing is that you're a little bit concerned about the detail.
No, not the detail, the scope.
Oh, the scope. And my, the reason I posed a question is that I, I just wanted to get an idea of the general amount of money which goes into the system in order for us to provide the rich, you know, education that we are providing, which isn't included in the tax base, so that the community at large would understand that even though this is what our tax base is paying for, and, and the reason is, is I think some people think, wow, this, they're, they have so much money, but I think that I wanted to also enlighten people to know that there's a whole lot more, I mean, I think there's a lot more money that goes in to really provide some of that rich experience that they have.
You don't have to think it, I can, I can nail that one down, there is more money that goes in than the tax dollars.
Right.
So you don't have to think it, speculate it, it's a fact. All I want to do is, we're addressing it, I want to help you understand the scope we're going to bound it with, though, because it's not going to be an unlimited scope.
The thing to keep in mind, too, is, is that there are certain budget items that are clearly material, food service, you know, other things like that, the fees that we charge for transportation and athletics that do go right into, you know, paying for those things. Field trips, I would argue, were not material compared to the overall budget that we're talking about, it would be probably less than, well under a percent of what we're talking about, whereas the other things are much more impactful on, and I think much more meaningful to the point you're, you're trying to, to see. So, and I think, to, to Paul's point is, is that if we get too busy trying to look at every last dollar, we'll never get it done, and we'll never even get to see the impactful thing. So let's start with the things that are making a significant impact, and, and if we think we might have left something out, we can, I'll circle back towards it.
And like I said, you know, my point was just to, to show that there really is a significant amount of monies that parents and teachers even put into our system, you know, in order to provide what we have, just, just so that, you know, if there, a question comes up, people recognize, and, you know, I think all of us who are part of the system know this, I think it's just good to, to show that.
I want to take an opportunity, on your question, again, you mentioned fees. For some years now, we've been working to make the P in public, the more capital P, public education, you know, none of us like the fee structure, that it exists, that is, for busing athletic activities. It was introduced many, many years ago into the district. What I'm happy to say about that, though, is, is we've been keeping a cap on it. Activity fees, going back to two thousand and five, have not changed. Athletic fees, going back to two thousand and five, have not changed. Busing, can't go that far back, but in go back to two thousand and seven, it hasn't changed. So certainly now, there's a balance as to what's tax dollars, what's the money that you're concerned with that parents may be putting in on top of the tax dollars. We're trying to get this more that, again, it's like, use the term, the capital P in public, so that indeed is public education more than just that specific user for those twelve or thirteen years. Public education enriches the entire community, that is very clear to this committee, and we take that commitment seriously. So we're working on that, too.
And I think you've done a very good job, I, I agree, you know, I think you've done a very good job keeping fees down.
We've enabled administrators to keep us out of trouble.
No, but I, and I appreciate that as a parent.
Okay, we did skip around a little bit, so I want to make sure we've covered what we want to. I want to leave the budget unless anybody else has anything at this point, committee members, anything? All right, superintendent's report.
We'll start off with our student representative, Ethan.
So I'm going to start at, at our elementary schools this evening, and the first thing is on April twenty-fifth, at six PM at the Russell Street School will be the, and correct me if I'm wrong, the current grade two's orientation into grade three as they prepare to transition from Shakerland School to Russell Street School. On April twenty-sixth, the following night, there's a book swap, Baskerup on Ice Cream Social at six-thirty at Russell Street School. And starting tomorrow, April fifth through April thirtieth, there's a grade four social action, action project, excuse me, Bags of Cheer for pediatric patients at Boston Children's Hospital. Up at the middle school next Monday, following school will be the seventh and eighth grade honor roll celebrations. Next Thursday, Thursday, April eleventh, from six to seven-thirty in the Littleton Middle School Gym, will be the eighth annual Littleton Middle School Science Fair. will be the eighth annual Littleton Middle School Science Fair. And I believe the eighth grade is currently in the middle of their English MCAS.
Just finished it.
Just finished it on Monday or Tuesday this week. Having an eighth grader in my house, I heard a lot about that. Up at the high school, this week, the Littleton High School drama program will be putting on Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat. Performances start tomorrow night at 7:30, continue Saturday night at 7:30, and Sunday at 3:00 in the afternoon. Tickets will be available at the door and also on www.mktix.com/LHS. On the academic front, tomorrow is the end of our third term at Littleton High School. And in a few weeks, AP exams will be starting for any, for all classes, regardless of what subject matter you take. And then from the athletics, baseball, softball, and girls tennis teams will start their regular seasons next week. I think all three start on Monday. Our boys and girls lacrosse team started their seasons this week. The girls lost on Tuesday, and the boys won a triple overtime game on Tuesday as well. And the boys will be at home tomorrow at 3:30 at Littleton High School against Hudson. And the girls will be in Hudson also at 3:30. And finally tonight, I have very successful news about our first track meet that happened just yesterday. First track meet in five or six years here.
Home track, yeah.
Home track meet. And the boys came very close. They did real well yesterday. A lot of really new faces that performed very well for them. And the girls score, well, 109 to 27 says how well they did yesterday. They performed very well, and they did a great job on the new track. That's all I have to say.
So it's a great doubleheader tomorrow. 3:30, you can see lacrosse game. 7:30, you can see Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat. All on one campus.
Track celebration? You mentioned track celebration on Saturday, April 6th?
You have that on your list?
April 6th, which is a Saturday, correct?
Yeah, I brought Russell Street School cafeteria.
Is that open to the public or by invitation?
I believe it's an open venue, no?
It's open.
Yeah. I think they're encouraging people to attend and celebrate this accomplishment and enjoy the track.
It is a beautiful track.
Details are available at littletrak.org.
Your administrators and school committee are going to go out and start doing the high jump here, surely. Okay, just kidding.
That could be like a Dancing with the Stars type, but then we could, there's a fundraiser.
There would be a fundraiser.
Thanks, Ethan.
Or a fundraiser.
That's easy, funny, as you are.
Kind of practical. My money's to me.
But if you do have the opportunity, folks, go and see the track. You all paid a lot of money for it. It's a nice facility, and it's for community use also. Please try and remember the restrictions as to what sort of shoes and the like to wear on the track. We want that to last us a long time. Okay, we would like to get into the calendar. Sure.
This is the second year that we've had a calendar committee within our district. And the calendar committee has taken a look at slotting in the various activities through the year and tried to maximize student learning time and, at the same time, take care of our contractual requirements. Having said that, the starting, projected starting date for school would be September 4th. Student days scheduled with snow days, 185. So if all five days were used, the last day of school would be June 24th, which is a Tuesday. 180 days without snow days, without the five snow days, the last day of school would be June 17th. The calendar has been endorsed by the administrative council and the ELA, as I break it to you this evening.
I don't see any Saturdays on there.
We've specially requested no snow for next day. Yes, no October storms either.
Al Caprilean promises. And when you went through the deconfliction process, you deconflicted from religious holy days.
Yes, we did.
Sensitivities to folks.
Couple comments?
Yes, sir.
On January 20th, school's closed. And that Wednesday, that half day. I'd like to see us trying to stay away from having half days on days, on weeks when there's-
I think that's the only time.
Days off.
Yeah, we tried to avoid it.
Well, the only other time is the half day before Good Friday, the 17th of April, was a half day. And then we have Good Friday off, no vacation week, so it's kind of piling up.
There's two schools of thought on this. Many times, what educators try to do is they try to maximize learning time with the full weeks rather than interrupted learning time. So, you know, a number of districts will do exactly the opposite to what you suggested. We've stayed coarse with the pattern of the district that has been used for years. And it also works well. But more often than not, I have to tell you, I've seen districts throughout my travels that would rather fragment the week and keep as many full weeks as possible than we do the other. So it's a, you know, just different philosophies, so to speak.
Just need to put something in my quiver so that...
Why is Thursday, the 17th, a half a day?
Where are you looking?
April 17th. And why is it a 13th?
We felt like many families might travel, and so if we do it that way, it lets families go a half a day.
Somebody still a professional development guy?
Right. So we feel like if families are going to travel anyway, it lets them go a half a day earlier.
And we did have one early release day that wasn't a Wednesday this year because it was up against a religious holiday. But we did feel that we wanted to into account travel time.
Just thought it might be easier to take it a Wednesday, one more Wednesday.
Yeah, I like it. Right.
And Chuck's comment about how the week was fragmented, that came into consideration. And we did take that into consideration and schedule them in November and October, early release days. So we have listened to parents' comments on both sides of the coin that the superintendent indicated.
One of the constituents that complains about that lives with me, so. I've done my job.
And so there's no ambiguity. Professional development days, which we've been using the term half day.
Yes.
Teachers, staff are receiving training.
Right.
And we've made a very strong commitment to training. And we talked about previous years. While we've talked about it, we have quite walked the talk. And this year, we're certainly putting that emphasis to ensure we do walk the talk this year and do more to help the training of our professionals. Because in any career field, any endeavor, any task, the better trained you are, the better you are at accomplishing the task. So that's our commitment here.
That segues into my question. District there. So over the last year, we've heard a lot about the value we're getting for the professional training days for the teacher side. But at the same time, there's now students that are getting a half day on those days there. And my understanding is, is that the middle school and high school, those are short classes versus full classes there. So I guess, talk to me about the education value of all of these tiny, short classes. What do I hear about the other side of this equation a little bit?
Circuit training?
No, no, no. We hear a lot about the teacher side there, but the students are getting very short classes and sometimes questionable whether it's any value to the students. And I guess I'd like that to be addressed.
It might be different from school to school.
It might be. That's why I like it.
Yeah, so.
May I suggest that we could have that as a presentation at one of the school committees, unless you feel it's a pressing issue that needs to be addressed? No, I would just like to hear, you know.
Which one?
No, I'm okay for it to be a separate presentation there.
Yeah, sincerely, is that satisfying for you?
Yeah, no, it's like I said, I think I'd just like to hear about that side of the equation, because, you know. There are alternatives. The alternatives would be to go back to the more frequent one and a half hour releases that we used to use, or we could, or other districts that go to a full day professional development, so the kids aren't under billing at all. And I just think that, you know, there's pros and cons to all of them, and it's worthwhile to have a, and I agree, I would really like to see it be a separate agenda item that we can have a full discussion about.
And a consideration of the costs incurred.
Yeah, it's multifaceted, no question about it.
So maybe before presentation of what we're doing, it's an open conversation, a good conversation about drivers.
Yeah. Well, what I'd like to see, first of all, is the conversation about what you're doing as principals to ensure that those classes are meaningful. And then from there, we can go into the other conversation in terms of are there alternate ways of doing business? I mean, you know full well, at the administrative table, you've heard me many times, perhaps too many times, talking about the fact that we could keep the same model, but we could switch morning and afternoon classes. And we've had those lively discussions, so to speak, throughout time.
Yeah, we do a lot of that.
Yeah, so, you know, I think that, you know, it's a good starting point to take a look at what you're doing and your assessment of its effectiveness to date, and we can branch out into those other discussions.
I like it. You got old John Wayne.
Okay, who wants to make a motion on the calendar?
I got, I made my notes for tonight, Paul.
Calendar question?
Yes.
He still uses paper in the hand, though.
I can't, I need like four screens in order to, so the other one, and I don't expect any real resolution or discussion on this tonight, but, you know, as we start looking at how the schedule keeps extending late into, into late June, we have a hard number of days that we have to hit there. We have an internal policy, we don't start before Labor Day. We have two vacation, you know, the March vacation, the April vacation. We have some additional religious days that we observe here. We're getting squeezed for time here. And at which point, do we take the discussion about when? What are, no, no Saturdays. Sorry. I'm going to take that one off the discussion.
Uniforms?
There. The discussion about our, the start date of the year, and when does New England, I know we can't always do a district at a time, look at, do we need two vacations in the?
Okay, let me stop there. Any more questions on whether we want to approve this calendar or not? I'm going to let you talk, but I want to keep things segmented here.
I just still got calendar. I got calendar.
I want to put this one to bed, if we may. Does that fit?
Yep, no, that's fine.
All right.
Do you have other questions about this calendar before we approve it?
No.
Okay, let's make a motion.
Motion to approve the calendar as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion made a second to approve. Calendar's presented this evening. Any other discussion on that, this calendar? Any further, excuse me, all's a favor?
Aye.
I opposed unanimously. Go ahead, Darrell.
How you got me all just off track here? Well, no, I get concerned, because, you know, as we get later into June, you know, the, you know, people start shifting their focus towards summer vacation at that point. The temperatures start going up. I think the attention span of students is dropping off at that point. We have some fixed dates that are early. I think like graduation, which sets most of the seniors done, as though there's almost a month of school left at that point there. We start squeezing all of the days available. We start needing to allocate the snow days that are inevitable. Global warming hasn't stopped them yet here. Some of the sports start before Labor Day, so families are already disrupting some of their vacation plans in order to be in town for that there. But we won't start school, so we're sending mixed messages to the parents about which activities their students need to be available for here. And likewise, I think the two vacations is a New England tradition. I'm not sure that that's consistent throughout the country. Many of the people down in the, no doubt, in the Washington DC area, that they want two vacations. What are you talking about there?
The spring break, a March break.
Well, I don't expect that we could come to some resolution or something like on this. It's something I think we need to start exploring as a discussion topic, both not just with the board, but with the community also, because it obviously impacts them.
First off, there's a calendar committee, right?
Correct.
Do you want to talk to that just a little bit as to where that calendar committee, and then I'm going to come back to bringing up a broader discussion. Again, I'm going to use the term near future.
Yep.
So I'm sorry, would you like to?
Just talk, just overview of the calendar committee, what the objective of it is.
The objective is to bring a group of people together, LEA Association members and administrators, and map out a calendar with the focus of maximizing student learning time. Within that realm is also calendaring the 12 half days that are part of our LEA contract. We deliberately, or I didn't deliberately, didn't ask them to look at variations from the current model, so to speak. We worked within a fixed template that has been used for a number of years in the district.
Bob, it seems that within the pursuit of excellent task force, this is something that can be addressed, if you're not already addressing it.
We have not been addressing this at all.
Maybe see about issues at there. And we're in drive with this, folks. And if you're all okay with this, it's multifaceted. It's public. Sure, the pursuit of excellence has people that are not even in the room here on that particular task force. So there's a different vision, if you will. Just going back, it, one of the benefits of being on the board for about seven years, Mike and I were just whispering, when was the last time we talked about it in an open meeting or a public forum? And I think it was four years ago that we had the public forum.
And survey.
And survey. So we did look at it, and I mentioned it two weeks ago. Jenna brought it up, about length of school days and the like. So it's certainly worthy of asking again. The community's not turned over. We're not that big of a community, and growing, or declining it in which way that quickly. So let's put that on an agenda, then, and we'll start looking at it. Maybe scope it out a little, Darrell, what you'd like to see. And then, you know, talk about it once more time or two, and then put it into a public forum, kind of activity. But to put things out there so that it's structured a bit, so when folks come with their suggestions, ideas, recommendations, we've got a direction ahead with it, okay?
You'll lead the discussion on Saturday school.
Ask any of you on Saturdays. Put the uniform on. Does that work for everybody?
Yes.
Yes.
While we're on calendars, it's actually with the current year calendar. And John, if you could just take a look at the Google, the Google calendar doesn't have graduation on it.
Cancer to the year.
Going again, baby.
Five-year plan.
Get a do-over.
This isn't the start of your last quarter next week. It's the start of your fifth to last. Okay, snow days, excuse me, school committee meeting schedule?
I've presented you with a draft this evening of next year's school committee calendar, but right off the starting date here, the August 23rd date was just to facilitate some discussion. There are two areas that I think we need to take a look at this summer. The first one, piggybacks educator evaluation. Our administrators will continue their training this summer with 12 hours of additional training to certify them to evaluate staff with the new education evaluator model, starting in September. The administrators will also be in service this summer on their own evaluation that will be used, starting in September. Having said that, we're using an agency called Teacher 21 to deliver some of these in-services. We're doing some ourselves, and we've done four or five already. In fact, next Thursday, we're meeting with all the staff and doing another module internally. In terms of a retreat, though, I thought it would be very valuable for the school committee to have some in-service training on the new models that pertains to the superintendent. So I have Teachers 21 on hold, so to speak, until we pick a date. There are other things that we really need to take a look at, so I was hoping that you would be generous enough to give us two days rather than one. And that's something that's certainly up for discussion. Last year, we had a retreat on Thursday, and this calendar, if we streamlined it to last year, that would be August 22nd instead of 23rd, 23rd of Friday. And we went, actually, from 3:00 to 8:00 PM.
Okay, two days, okay with everybody? Not only 3:00 to 9:00?
Yeah, we'll not do Friday, no?
No, I was just going to say.
Most definitely.
Two days in a row, one separated?
First, I think it's, personally for me, just to say block off two days, so just mess up one week.
Yeah. All right, you got your two days, six to nine, consecutive days.
Three to.
Three to nine, so.
Three to nine, so Wednesday and Thursday?
Okay, Wednesday and Thursday.
So, August 21st and 22nd.
Hold on, hold on.
Okay.
So, Wednesday, Thursday, or Thursday, Friday?
Wednesday, Thursday. Wednesday, Thursday. Yeah, superintendent seems to have dates picked out, are we okay with those dates?
Fine for football cheerleading families.
That's right, we're not going anywhere. I mean, besides, it's starting before Labor Day, by the way, to Darrell's point.
Oh, is it?
You okay with this? You okay? You're okay, Darrell?
I don't even mind, I've got two people up at work, so.
Well, if it is the week before, if that's the day before Labor Day, the day before Labor Day, do you wanna go?
No, no, what I meant was starting before Labor Day.
Oh, I see, I got, sorry, sorry.
No, it's two weeks before.
Yeah.
We haven't scheduled our summer vacations, I don't.
Would four, Chuck, would four o'clock work better for you?
I'll make it work, somehow or another, I'll figure something out.
We can note down the time as we get pulled in. All right, yeah, for the moment, all right, we're all okay with 21, 22, August, and notionally three PM to nine PM. Okay, Kelly?
Sounds good.
Thank you. Okay, next item. On the agenda, item four, snow days, as you know, I tried my hardest to stay within the five snow days, and it really was quite painful when I had to call that sixth day. In fact, I kept phoning our Department of Public Works and begging them to change the forecast, and it just kept getting worse as time went on. As per contract, I met with the Littleton Educators Association, and we consulted, and we're bringing forth a recommendation this evening that we make up that sixth day on Wednesday, June 26th, and that would be a half-day.
Half-day?
Right.
That's in the rules?
That's in the rules, yeah. Past practice.
Yeah, the last day's always a half-day.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So now Tuesday becomes a full day?
Yeah. I was hearing added day, half-day, and I remember when we had the ice storms, but that's not an issue for this, I'm sorry. Unregard all previous. Okay, do you need us to vote on that?
Not a heads, or, I don't, we need a motion.
So, what will be the last day of school?
Wednesday?
June 26th.
June 26th. Thanks to you, Darrell. Okay, want to talk about slideshow?
Sure, item five, last year, we started to create a district slideshow. I've been a firm believer in doing that on a yearly basis. The slides are in, and our technology coordinator, Mike McKeefren, is working with me to create some sequencing, and of course, adding music. So, at our next school committee meeting, we will debut the slide presentation for this current year. Item six, as you're aware, and it certainly hasn't been formalized yet in terms of a public announcement, but our Director of People and Personnel Services is retiring, and as a result, we'll be looking for a new replacement for that position. I've asked Mr. Fariti and Mrs. Temple to co-chair a search committee for the candidate, and at this time, I would request that the school committee appoint a school committee member to the search committee.
I wanna say first, it's Diana Peterson, it's gonna be a loss.
She is.
So, whoever on the committee, we're gonna hold your feet to the fire, you're gonna have to find a good person. My thoughts here is, I'd like Bob to do this. What do you guys think?
Fine with me.
More contos?
Is that it?
I'll make a motion, so that we appoint Bob or Neil.
You okay with this?
I'm okay with that.
All right, good.
You're pulling to it?
Yeah. All right. Do we need a motion on that, Kelly?
Might as well.
Okay, go ahead.
Second.
My motion made a second to appoint Bob as the school committee representative and the Director of People's Services, replacement search committee. And discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Opposed?
I have a question, what's the rest of the makeup of the committee?
We're meeting early next week, and we'll come up with a list of stakeholders that will involve.
Let us know what the makeup is.
Yes.
All right, interested citizens? Interested teachers?
I have one thing.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to put in a little plug for CPAC to have a position on that, on that hiring committee, if possible.
It's already done, already done.
Thank you very much.
So, we'll be contacting you and asking you to select an individual for us.
Great, thank you.
All right, subcommittees, PNBC?
That's me. Steve, PNBC, we met last night, talked about the list for the middle school, and actually, Mark, if you can get him to come in here, there's been some movement on what's being purchased, some additional dollars, not additional dollars being made available, but something coming in under the budget, so there's more dollars available, if you will. So, can we get a re-prioritized list, so that we can move some stuff along, because I know there's, I know there's a list, and there's things that we need to, we need to get these things purchased. There was an ask of the PNBC to have an update for the top three priorities, to make sure that there's kind of like a drop-in date, because if the item, if the money's not allocated, then we get, we're losing the penalty, and I know you know this still. Things like getting the contractor in to do the hand dryers and things like that, where you actually need to schedule somebody. The electrician to come in and do what needs to be done in the gymnasium. So, things like that, as long as we have some sort of a scope or an idea of when that will be finalized.
Sure.
We're probably close to that, and we may already have that, so just an update. So, there's meetings the next two Wednesday nights.
Okay.
So, when you guys can get something to me out, I'll bring that to the PNBC, so we can keep the, keep the process moving forward.
We'll work on that and get it to you here as soon as, soon as possible.
Excellent. Safety and security, I'm gonna ask Steve to talk about the study, the survey.
So, pursuant to recommendations from the safety and security committee, as well as school committee, we did receive a proposal on a building security assessment review to be performed. I had presented that documentation, I believe, a couple of weeks ago. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review that and review the scope of services. The school committee did go and request additional funding from the town, which they have released that money, so that money is available, so pursuant to school committee recommendation and approval, I would like school committee approval to move forward with that review.
Any other questions, or Steve on that? Just reiterating, you said FinCom did release $7,500 to do the security survey of the four buildings, and to see where we may wanna go in the future.
Correct.
So.
And they'll come back with a list of recommendations, and hopefully, at least a ballpark price tag of what these recommendations may or may not cost, and the school committee can proceed from that recommendation list.
Yeah, one of the recommendations as to how to possibly proceed based on what comes out of this particular survey, is maybe even addressing town meeting in November, special town meeting, because right now, it's, I thought, at the very least, town meeting next year, there may be some items that can come about out of this. But if there's a sense of urgency on a particular issue or issues, that very well, it might be special town meeting in November, and FinCom was very supportive of that approach. All right, so we take a motion to approve Steve to expand the funds?
I make the motion that we authorize the school department to spend $7,500 on a survey of security measures in the district.
Second. Motion made a seconded, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, got it, Steve.
I'll schedule that right away, and as soon as that report is available, we'll make it available to.
Yes. Let us know when you award, please. And Kelly, either through me or through you, to the FinCom and Board of Selectmen, maybe Keith also, is let them know that we've awarded the contract, and I wanna keep them appraised of it, because this is certainly a community-wide issue, and also that the support they gave us in authorizing the release of these funds, so I wanna keep them appraised of it, please.
I'll actually, I'll award it next week, Paul.
Okay, thank you.
So, Steve, I sent you a note, I didn't get a chance, I have two dates recorded for our next safety meeting, could you?
Can I get back to you? I apologize, I don't remember which date is which, so maybe somebody here can help, because they're on.
I thought it was Tuesday morning at 7:30.
Yeah, I think I have that. Because I wrote down both next Tuesday and the 30th.
I have the 30th. I have the 9th at 7:00 AM. I have the 9th at 7:30.
Oh, 7:30.
I like 7:30 better.
They're usually 7:30.
Down, that's my problem.
And the 30th, you said?
Yeah.
I have nothing on the 30th.
Okay. April 9th, 7:30. All right. Yeah, I'm going to, that's why I wanted to clarify, because that, and then I just wanted to remind the principals that I'd like a readout of their building access procedures for visitors, and then an update as to refresher training and procedures in place for the staff during that. And if anybody in the public is interested, we're meeting at 7:30 at the Russell Streets School.
Might address that, what was possible, yeah?
Yep.
Now we get to policy subcommittee, yes?
Again.
And we have a policy to discuss.
Yes. All right, so I go back to policies. Our wellness policy, and I think we have representatives from the wellness committee out there. So, tonight, I'm bringing you the first reading of our updated district wellness program policy, policy ADF. This is modeled under the MAS C recommendations, and then we tailored it locally with the local, sort of the local priorities here. Procedure, in developing this policy, I met with the wellness committee, spoke to them about the objectives they're trying to accomplish at the district level with the policy, and then their actions in terms of what they'll be doing as the wellness committee in implementing that, and I didn't know if you wanted to, just sort of make a few comments about where you're going with the wellness program, just a couple of comments.
Meredith, come on up to the mic, so we make sure we capture on TV.
I'm glad I actually wore Léo clothes. I'm not wearing my Stukhans. Hello, everyone, I'm Meredith Perry, I co-chair the wellness committee with Natalie Branch, who's wonderful as well. Currently, we're working on a wellness fair right now, and it's something that is completely in the, like, baby stages. This is something that a committee member brought to us, they do this in, at Bromfield High School, or, I'm sorry, at Harvard, because I believe they do it in the middle school. Is it still Bromfield?
Okay.
And they also do it in Acton Boxborough as well. So, it's something that we're really trying to bring here to Littleton, and it would be a workshop-type activity where students and parents would go to different workshops about wellness. Currently, we're focusing on the middle school with stress, that seems to be a huge key that we found with the youth risk behavior survey. So, right now, again, we're, a lot of ideas coming in, if you have any ideas, please feel free to email me, mparry@littletonps.org. So, we're really, it's the beginning stages of this committee, so the wellness fair is kind of what we're working on, and obviously, the wellness policy was our first big task, and it took us a little bit longer than we had hoped, but I think that it's a solid policy that we have right now. Any questions?
Thank you, and then I just hit a couple of highlights out of the policy. If you could scroll up here, some of the pieces that we tried to sort of codify within the policies, some of it's right about there is good, there is defining the wellness committee's role and relationships in terms of working with the, at the various grade level, building levels for things such as celebration guidelines, and other pieces there in particular. If we scroll to the next one here, they also provided significant input on sort of the overarching goals of the, what we're trying to do with the nutrition education, the physical education activities, and the other school-based activities, were heavily drawn upon the, sort of the local priorities that they saw was important here. One of the ones that we talked a lot about was, you know, consistency in the messaging that we're providing to the students there, and trying to lay out some frameworks and discussion pieces, so that we're not providing conflicting or conflicting direction to the students relative to, you know, is this good, is that bad, but more about the balance and the overall approaches to wellness there. But I thought it was a, it was a very interesting process going on, and, you know, succeeded in actually getting other inputs other than my own for some of these policies here.
Was there candy involved at these meetings?
No. I can assure you.
Actually, no.
Not one piece. So, they have a sugar low.
Donuts.
Donuts. There.
Fried goods.
So, we present this tonight for the first reading, and we'll entertain any questions or comments that committee or public has.
That counts your first reading.
We need a motion.
We take a motion that we've accepted for this first reading.
Do it for the elements.
Yep.
Make a motion that we accept policy ADF, school district wellness program, as first reading.
Your motion made a seconded, first reading, favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Your motion made a seconded, first reading, favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the tri-chairs of the wellness committee and all the members of the committee who have spent a lot of time sifting through the various areas of wellness, and, you know, coming up with a niche, so to speak. You put a lot of hard work into it, and I had the pleasure of attending one of your meetings a couple of weeks ago, and I was just so impressed with the conversation around the table, and the commitment to wellness within our district, so thank you very much.
All right. Anything else?
Yes, sir.
No more policy tonight.
I see no need for an examiner session, so maybe I'll just.
Motion adjourned?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Johnny, I gotta give you a check.
I'll take one.
Give to Kelly.
Kirby, did you catch that?
We're not getting checks?
That's on camera.
The mic's on, the camera's alive.
Yeah, it was good.
Did you think any one of us would miss that comment?